Good evening, everyone. We're kind of flying under the radar here without all the tools that are normally available to us. So we'll try and speak up without the microphones. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, November 7th Planning Board Meeting of the Town of Bryanbeck. And establish that we have a forum. So I know of no, other than some order changes that we may adopt as we go through the agenda based on timing, I know of no changes to the agenda. Gretchen, there are none?
No.
Okay, have you all had a chance to review the meeting notes? Jim?
Yes.
Exhausted, as always? Thank you, Edna, second please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Have you all had a chance to look at the October 17 minutes?
Yes.
Any changes or corrections? Could I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain since I was asked also in that meeting. And Sean's abstaining as well. I assume that even, okay, that's good. Correspondence and announcements. I am sad to report that John Lobadia's business is growing and so successful coming out of the pandemic that he has chosen not to reapply. His term would be up at the end of this year. And he was in touch with me and felt he just has too many work commitments and commitments to his family to reapply for a full seven-year term. So that means that we will be looking for applications for people who are interested in serving on the planning board. If you know of people, if you could suggest to them that they might look for the volunteer application form online. Or they can call the town clerk, John Winnie, and ask for information about how they might submit an application. There is then, hopefully, there will be applications to look at. There will be a review process and we'll interview people and hope that we can fill the vacancy at the start of the new year. If we do not, we will still continue with six members. Makes it a little harder, but, so if you would pass the word and let the word out. I'd like to announce upfront, first, I want to thank the school for allowing us to meet here. And I'm happy to see people found their way here and not circling around the school trying to find their way in. And Craig found his way here, too.
Yes.
From the school.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Now she'll know the difference between chancellor and all-queen.
Well, you're here.
That was a good bike ride.
It was, yeah. Especially since I had to ride right past here to get back.
So thanks to the school. However, the school comes with a greater limitation on time than we have at town hall. And because of the cleaning schedule and needing to turn things around for the morning, the school is requiring us to have vacated the building by 10 o'clock. So I am going to be looking to close down the meeting starting at 9:30 so we can honor the request of the school. We're going to try and move forward some of the ZBA referrals, knowing that the last application under public hearings is Rockledge. If there are a number of people here wishing to speak on the Rockledge application, we will be continuing it. There's no question about that. But I will, at 9:30, close it down and ask people to continue their comments either in writing or at the next public hearing. So that being said, I think, in order to do expedite what I've just talked about, we can, because we have a few minutes before 6:15, have Jim look at at least the second Penny and Fred Levine case 1035 of the ZBA referral. So Jim, if you want to go through that? No, he, if you want to do the calendar change?
I will, after he does this.
Yep.
So this is a ZBA referral for Levine at 23 Hook Road. They're looking to construct an addition, which would include a garage and a studio space above. So it's this area over in here. Therefore, the ZBA currently, to construct the addition, and they're looking for one area variance, a variance of five feet from the side yard setback requirement of 100 feet. The proposal will not only create the new addition, but also a new driveway along and parallel to an existing moderate slope between the addition and the side yard property. And as you can see, the garage is kind of proposed and built into the hillside, so it kind of runs along what is the slope here. So there'll probably be some leveling and there's definitely some clearing of trees based on our Google map. We're not here necessarily to look at that. We're just here for the ZBA referral of the five-yard setback request for the 100-foot side yard. I don't see any issues with it, essentially, since it's come to us. It's a five-foot yard, it's a five-foot request for a 100-foot setback, given that there's a tree line location in the other house. I didn't see any issues with that. And I can think, they'd sent some images. This is the house, this is the garage. So the new driveway will come in a little further over here and then kind of hook back into the side of the house over here.
I don't know that tower.
Okay.
Yeah, I was working on that house on 9/11.
Oh.
Well, then we'll send you on the site visit when it comes back to us.
I'm glad to, yeah.
So the driveway will probably be coming somewhere around here and then around there somewhere on the other. But you can see there's a bit of a slope here. And the next house is over here. So there'll still be tree line between them. So the request is for five feet into the side yard.
I agree. We really know planning issues. So we went all right with that? So Jim, you have a referral?
Yep, for responsive, no or minor issues. Town of Bryanbeck Planning Board on referral by the ZBA, the application by Penelope and Fred Levine for variance to construct in addition to the side of the existing residence. Finds requested variance raises no significant planning or environmental concerns and recommend that the ZBA reply upon their own study of the facts and deciding the application in accordance with criteria set forth in Town Code Chapter 125 and consideration input of neighboring property owners.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, can you move?
Second. A motion by Michael, second by Edna. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Okay, the motion carries. One thing under, I'd like to circle back. Because of the, looking at the calendar for next year, the town board reord meeting will take place on Tuesday, the 3rd of January?
Yes.
We would have been moved from the 2nd, which is a holiday, to the 3rd, but now we have to move from the 3rd to the 4th. At least, that's the proposal I'm bringing to you tonight, so that we can have the planning board meeting following the reord meeting. Is that date acceptable to folks? Are you able to move to Wednesday, the 4th? Sorry, I'm making out. It's all right. Gretchen, there's no court night that Wednesday?
No, Joan already put it in. She said, there's nothing.
Okay. Do you need a motion, Gretchen?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion to change the date? Thank you, Edna, second please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, opposedions? So Gretchen will be revising the already distributed calendar for the year and getting it posted on the town website and back out to us all in order to move forward. Okay. Jim? What do we, should we continue with the referrals or do you want to hold Lloyd until after the public hearings?
Well, it makes sense to hold him. Of course, he's got a couple of minutes to wait for the first public hearing.
Okay. Gretchen, or, I'm sorry, I did have that right. Okay. All right, so we're just going to pause for a few minutes and wait until we hit the magic mark of 6:15, unless there's something else, anybody else on the board wishes to chat around about. There are none?
Is there a question? Is there a Wi-Fi, like a transmission, or something?
I, I don't have it. Wi-Fi information?
Oh.
Great meal, handy pockets size.
Exactly. It's local, too.
Yeah.
It's tight. It's a tiny school. My kids go hang out in the classroom with the teachers. My daughter, my son is not looking. He's got to be hanging out with friends here. My daughter's like, I'm just going to hang out. I have cool teachers.
That's okay.
Yeah, they all go up there. Every year, her and her friends find like a safe space for the teacher to just hang out.
It's all right.
Just hold out. It was an Airbnb, a Airbnb.
Okay, folks, I would like to proceed now with the scheduled public hearings for this evening. First, out is Mistel Brady, 41 Grinnell Street, Site Plan and Special Use Permit for a fence and the installation of French doors. Who is here representing?
I'm here. Where do you want me?
We want you up here and we want you to share with the planning board what you'd like to do and the public.
Okay. Hello. So we are proposing two projects. The first is our French doors for, that would replace two windows that look out onto our patio. So it's right here. Currently, these are just two windows. The doors would be the exact same width, same style as the rest of the house, just adding a little step down to the patio. This part of the house is, was built in 1870, so there's a historic preservation. But this part of the house was a later addition, built somewhere in the 19-teens and is not on record, I think, as part of the historic part of the house. So that's the first project. The second project is a fence that would, currently, there is a fence right here. This is the north part of our yard and the east part of our yard. It's somewhat rotting and falling down. We're proposing to replace that fence, continue on around here, have a gate, continue on here, and then it would be five feet from Butler Street and then 20 feet from Grinnell. So it would kind of come here, wrap the inside of our landscaping. So it'd be the inside of our landscaping. It's simply a containment for our dog. It is four feet, non-privacy, open wood, you can see in between it. We've talked to the highway department, they're okay with snow removal. And that's the general idea. I'm brief, because I know you have a lot to say.
Jim, any comments?
Nothing new from the previous meeting. I think these issues are principally structural and aesthetic, as we are in the RCO. I did see a copy of the email from Bob Wyatt, requesting it be five feet off the road, so I think we're good there. We'll have that for the file. But otherwise, I don't see any issues.
I guess I would, I would state one thing. There's, we would just make sure to be on this side of our property line so as not to affect our neighbor on this side. She has a metal fence, we're not removing that fence at all. That's it.
So your fence would be within the property line?
Well, yes.
Okay. But sometimes it's on the line.
Yeah, no, within our property line. Probably even move it in further from where it is now, which is probably on the property line.
Site visit?
Yeah. I believe that the changes are a benefit to the property and a benefit to the neighborhood. There are some plantings on the outside of the fence along Butler Street, which will remain.
Right?
Yes. The fence is not solid. And I think you mentioned that you're going to leave it weathered. Yeah, I mean, at this point, we don't know if eventually the house, the house is discolored. And so eventually, that might change. So, I mean, if anything, it would eventually be white or plate grit. That's all I have.
There'll also be additional hands getting another, the one shade tree placed along the fence here on Butler Street. And I think it really can eventually, is to have a hands getting basically covered fence and whatnot. And also restore privacy to the back patio there. The plant seems sound, seems to make good sense. The French doors, basically, every other window in the house has this, that same, that same design. And the French doors are just, you know, adding a few more panes at the bottom. I don't think that many of the tractings, the tractings of the house. And we really do have need, I mean, somebody getting out, maybe a yard or something or whatnot. So this would be kind of, I can see any issues with this.
And I believe we have comments, or actually, comments from both CAV and HEPAT saying that they had no, no issues or issues with the application. All right, I will open it up to the public, unless there are other comments from other planning board members. Okay. Members of the public, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this application? Hearing none, I would entertain an emotion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Michael, second by Delise. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Hearing none. Jim, I believe you have an approval resolution?
Yep. Asking the planning board to, so the application for site plan and special use permit in Town Code Chapter 125 for installation of French doors and fence at 41 Grinnell Street, reaffirming the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, based upon the review of the submitted information, finding that the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for the special use permit, finding the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits, and granting the requested special use permit, conditional upon site plan approval. Regarding site plan approval, asking the board to find the proposed work and intended use consistent with Town Code Chapter 125 and approving the application and materials as submitted by Deckers surveying, dated August 10, 2022, and authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the adequate satisfaction of three conditions listed here.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Sean, second. Second to Delise, I'll hold the board, Greg?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
And I go, I. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Next public hearing for this evening is Matthew Schreiber, 49 Kelly Street, Site Plan and Special Use Permit for Solar Installation. On and up?
My name is Jim, with Gasoline Solar, representing Matt Schreiber. And we are seeking site plan approval for a 6.8 kilowatt roof-mounted solar system. We have a note from the HAPAC giving narrative traces, basically, with the panels facing the road. Unfortunately, that is the southern exposure. There is very little option for Mr. Schreiber to change that, given the, given the other replains facing, facing the north and the southeast of the, whatever doing. But, I don't know if there are any questions in here?
Jim?
Nothing new. Based on the review, you know, I initially talked about how it is visible when we are in a scenic road. HEPAT did comment on that, we could discuss that previously. The only other comment that I had is I noticed that one of the panels is inside that yellow area, which I guess is supposed to be there, you left open, but you had stated that that's acceptable for the building code, so that's fine. Me, I don't get in the building codes. Other than that, I think it's a design and visibility issue.
Okay. Site visit, before?
Well, as luck would have it, I happen to be on site. There's another site visit.
All right.
And Mr. Schreiber cannot really discuss this project, what he was wanting to do. And I think it integrates well into the house. I think for the days we have, we realize the importance of alternative energy. It could be on historic houses, it could be on all sorts of structures. And I think this is done very well, according to the lack. And it's the sort of thing that if one wanted to take them off, and you take them off, and you're not going to do any structural damage to the house, or anything like that, it's easy to pursue. But I think the, ten of the times, I think that we all recognize the need for as much non-fossil fuel generation of power as we can possibly do. And I think, because we decentralize also, and wouldn't it be nice if we didn't have to have all these power lines and utility poles and things like that? So, I personally think that this is a good project, and I certainly understand why it should be.
Were you the only person on the site?
I was.
Okay. I also think we heard from HEPAT and CAV on this. And they had no issues.
Generalities.
Generally, other than the one that HEPAT raised, which was, you know, perhaps a desire that can't be realized to not have them facing the street. But we understand that it's constrained to the point that that's just not possible. Members of the public? Anyone here wishing to comment on this application? Hearing none, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Then we'll move to the approval resolution. Jim?
So for the planning board's consideration tonight, a draft approval resolution for installation of rooftop solar at 49 Kelly Street, asking you to reaffirm the proposed action as type 2 under seeker, finding that the submitted information and proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. With respect to the application for special use permit to authorize the installation, finding that work in intended use is consistent with Chapter 125, Section 12567, and granting the requested special use permit, condition upon site plan approval. With respect to the application for site plan approval, asking you to find the proposed work in intended use is consistent with Town Code Chapter 125, Section 126, 12569 and 12575, and approving the application, closing the materials and site plan submitted review. And then authorizing the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the adequate satisfaction of the three conditions listed here.
Do I have a motion to accept the draft approval resolution? Thanks, Delise.
Second.
Edna?
Aye.
You'll then hold the board, Greg?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I go, I. Next up, Alexander Lloyd, Morton Road, Site Plan Review, Construction of a Single Family dwelling and artist's studio. I'd like you to share with us your project.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Steele, the architect, representing Alex Lloyd, the owner. If you don't mind, we'll move to the second slide. May I ask you?
Do you speak up? Because we're just constantly...
Oh, sorry. The vending machine, I'll try to, I'll try to compete with the vending machine.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. So what I'll do is, I know we have a lot of analysis, but maybe in the interest of keeping things brief, I'll try to speak to most of that analysis just on this page. And then Edna also had some great questions when we did this site review, so we have some subsequent diagrams. The project is a new single-family house. This is on Morton Road, a site that's about just over five acres. It's a single-family dwelling, four bedrooms. If you don't mind zooming out a little, Jim? Thank you. A single-family house, four bedrooms. There will be a new septic system in this area right here. There'll be an accessory structure which will serve as an artist's studio. And then associated with the house will be a new driveway that runs along here. Just to give context to the constraints of the site, we've got a conservation easement, which is this hatched-in area along Morton Road. That protects kind of the scenic drive that is Morton Road. It's an easement of 100 feet. We've also got 70, over 77% of the site is steep slope, which I know you witnessed in person. We've got archaeological sites, which we did full studies for and have an acceptance by preserving the archaeological remnants on site. And then we also have the natural outcropping, rock outcroppings, and substantial forested site. So what we're proposing is, and maybe, maybe it will help to kind of go to, I think it's Sheet 18? Oh, sorry. We're on six. Okay. If we go back? Back?
For 18?
19. Okay. The ones with the analysis for the...
Do you mean like this one?
Yes.
It's near the beginning, A1 dot 3?
Oh, sorry. There we go. Sorry about that. If we go back, oh, yeah, back one. Okay, here, if you don't mind zooming in. So just to give visual to what we're talking about, oh, actually, sorry, back one. We sent you a lot. Okay, very good. And if it's possible to zoom in here. So the site, as we talked about, is just over five acres. To orient you, this is Morton Road, the setback here. The as-of-right buildable, if you take into account the HP20 setbacks, is this small area here, given that the site is actually this larger. If you look at the rock outcroppings within the as-of-right, this is what's illustrated here. What we're trying to do is provide, put forth a very site-sensitive proposal, and we are trying to avoid building over or disturbing in any way the natural rock outcroppings. The conservation easement, which again is meant to kind of preserve the scenic character of Morton Road, is along here, again, kind of removing that as a development area. And then below... Here, we have the archaeological areas that were identified. We did the phase one... Here we have the archaeological areas that were identified, we did the phase one assessment, and we removed all of the remnants, those were catalogued and done as necessary, and then what they told us was, as long as we maintain a 10-foot buffer around all the archaeological remnants, which were essentially retaining walls, then as long as we didn't build within those areas, they could remain intact. Applying the steep slope across the site, again, what you see here is that the white is what's residual, once you remove the easement, the steep slope, the archaeological areas and the rock outcroppings, and what's left is, this is the dashed area of what the as of right buildable is for the site, and then this is what's left currently. Interestingly enough, this is the flat area that we propose the septic, because the septic requires a certain level topography, and so it allows us to minimize impact on any tree clearing and minimize kind of soil disturbance. So the septic system is being proposed where the kind of level land currently exists. And then that's what you see here. So once you remove the area that's best proposed for the septic, what we have left is essentially, these residual whites are kind of the buildable area, and then what you see between the dashed is buildable area within as of right, and that's essentially why we're going to zoning board for the, excuse me, three variances. And if you don't mind going to the next, Jim? Now, what's interesting to note is that there are certain things that one can do as of right. So as of right, we're allowed to have a buildable area that is basically 1.7, so that residual area that's left, you can have a structure that's 35, 30 plus 5 feet high. And so what's important to know is, what we're proposing now is, we're effectively following the contours as a very low profile. I wonder if it's easier with that, but. Can you all hear me if I don't use the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a little easier. But effectively, each of these is showing that as of right, there's certain things that we can do, those as of right proposals have higher massing. Effectively, the site allows us to build higher structure, more square footage, and larger mass than what it is we're proposing, and this is just kind of illustrating those three things. So if we were to build within the residual piece of as of right, the structure itself would be much taller than what we're proposing. Our maximum lot coverage is, can be 5%, and if we were to build that, which we're not proposing, because again, we're not looking to disrupt the trees that are there currently in this area, and we certainly don't want to disrupt the rock outcroppings. The other issue with working anywhere within that specific rock outcropping is again the soil disturbance, which that we're trying to be very sensitive to the natural conditions. But again, if we were to build there, we could be building a much larger mass, taller building, and bigger footprint than what's being proposed currently. Here is what we are proposing, which is again, when you remove all of those other site constraints and utilize the space that we have, what we're doing is, we're doing a one-story structure, hugging the existing contours to the extent that we can, and then we're effectively supporting that with a second under-story structure to kind of nestle it within the topography. What that does, obviously, is it pushes us into the east setback, which is as of right from what we can do with the current HP20 guidelines. And then the artist's studio is utilizing, again, trying to minimize the soil disruption, the tree disruption or removal, and, um, uh, working within kind of the more level area of the lot itself. But I think the next one kind of shows the visual impact. So this is along Morton Road, and again, the scenic road, which visibility is very important. So here, as of right building area, if we were just building within as of right lot, you would see quite a tall mass from Morton Road, and obviously, you see a taller mass from any of the vantage points. Maximum building coverage, again, as of right, again, it's a larger mass and it's actually wider, and then because we're nestled down within the existing contours and trying to work within the site itself, so as not to disrupt, all you effectively see is one portion of the two-story space, bless you, and the majority of the house is actually below the sight line of Morton Road, and then the artist's studio is again, barely visible from its roof line. Here, and maybe, well, and then this is what you see too, this is a diagram showing, the dark dash line is basically your vantage point from Morton Road, that's the level of Morton Road. So the house really kind of comes down and follows the natural topography. Another important point is that the current driveway that we're proposing also follows that natural topography. We're really trying to kind of minimize the overall cut and fill of the site. And what you're seeing here, again, to orient you, this is Morton Road with the conservation easement and the septic, this little bit of kind of the top level of the house being green, and the top slimmer of the studio is what we showed before as being visible from Morton Road. But Edna, you brought up some good comments and questions when you were doing the site visit, and some of it was, you know, when you're on the site, you kind of question, how possibly are we building a house, given the steep slope? Do you have these as additional? I thought, yeah, here we go. So, so effectively, zooming in, this area here is, the blue is where we're kind of sitting along those existing contours, and where the one-story part of the house goes beyond those contours, if you flip to the next, you'll see. So this is looking, this is looking, basically from the water side, looking at the house itself. So the main part of the house is again, a one-story that follows the contours. The lower story is what basically supports it. The foundation, you know, whether that becomes very simple spread footings, we spoke to the structural engineer, whether it's spread footings or whether it's piers, that's not something that architecturally you're going to see, effectively, it's hidden by the house itself. We're trying to minimize kind of the cut and fill by which this thing is very much nestled into the existing contours. But the important thing to know is, whether it ends up being spread footings or piers has everything to do with the soil composition, and we'll be working with a geotech to kind of determine that. And effectively as well, wherever the rock is, whether it's spread footings or the piers, we'll be kind of identifying and locating those to have minimal impact and disruption to those rock outcroppings. But this is not in any way a house on stilts or anything that you would see visibly in terms of the foundation itself. So again, for the most part, there's just a little bit of kind of cut here in terms of following the main contour line. What you're seeing, the red, again, is the elevation of the road itself. And again, the kind of cut for the lower level with fill, so that you're not visibly seeing any of that foundation. And then the next is just a cross section, right, and here. Again, this is the main part of the house, for the most part below, any visibility of the road, and then you're seeing it really kind of utilizing the existing contour. And I know probably HAPAC did give some feedback, and I believe as well CAB, but that came today, but I know HAPAC had said that the proposal is sensitive to site surroundings and does not have negative impact on a historic resource, and I guess the archaeology, archaeologists had no archaeological concerns. Okay, Jim?
Mainly just summarizing the comments I made before, excuse me, we're in the middle of, you haven't applied to the ZVA, so the application's in front of the ZVA, so we'll need to wait for their determination before we can move forward here, I would assume. Need approval from County Health for water septic. We did get a copy of the tree report, so thank you for that, just to show members of the planning board kind of what's proposed to be removed or planted. And then again, the comment we received from the neighbors, CAB, WAC, and HAPAC, I think all had some concerns, and mainly just saying that the site visit, I thought, would help inform the discussion further.
Okay, and that would take us to a report from the folks who made the site visit.
Edna was me.
Me and Edna, you want me to start?
Um, if you'd like, Sean.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd was kind enough to join us with the architect to look at the site, and it was, it was clear from the start that he has a great passion and enthusiasm for the challenges that the site presents, which steep slopes, rocky faces, and he didn't view those as things that really need to be obliterated, but something that needs to be revered and appreciated and celebrated as, as part of the site. So that's, I think, you know, it's a very welcome approach. However, it does seem, it's a very constrained site, and it is next to a very important resource, which is the Wilderstein Historic Site, and we're a town that very much values its historic character. And the design, which, it's a, it's a very slick and wonderful design, but it, it doesn't seem to really resonate with a lot of the existing built fabric in the town of Rhinebeck. So, um, it's, again, very ambitious and, but it does seem to be dissident with the character of the town. So that, that would be my take on it. It's, you know, to walk the site, it is going to be very prominent because of the, because of the slope, it really presents itself and jumps out from, from, you know, it's, that's a design feature, and it is very ambitious, but it does make the, it does make the building much more prominent.
Am I allowed to respond?
I'd like to, I'd like to finish up this. Okay, sure.
In order to give the board some idea of the site, I took a few photos, and Jim, I think, has those lined up, and we'll go through those quickly. This is the scene from Morton Road, so you're looking at the scenic Hudson Conservation Easement area, and this is kind of typical of the site, there are not a lot of large grand trees on the site, but it is pretty well wooded. Many of the trees look like, you know, they came up 50 years ago or so. I think that when you're looking through some of the more sparsely wooded frontage area, you're going to be seeing the canopy of the trees that are lower down on the slope because the land slopes from this area down toward the river. Next picture. This is a view of the site from below, so you can see the rock outcrop, and you get an idea that the slope, which continues down to the tracks, is wooded in this way. A lot of trees, not any huge trees, but it's pretty well wooded. And the next. This is right below the house site, you can see that it's on a rock, you know, a lot of rock. And again, you can see trees on top of the rock outcrop, and some of those trees are on this side of the house footprint, and some are within the house footprint. And this is just one narrow, you know, section, I mean, the house is quite long and it goes along the rock. And, oh, and then this one, I think, is kind of important. Those little white dots are things I applied to the ribbon that states the, the house footprint, and so that you can see there are obviously going to be trees inside the footprint, which will be eliminated. I think that any trees outside the footprint will also die, you know, either be eliminated or die, especially because when you look to the right, the land rises, and the plan calls for kind of reducing that rise over some distance so that the house, which is, you know, flat on the site, can sit there. So I did have a number of questions that I think the, the planning board might want to think about. One is, we were talking about the septic system, and there's a desire that was stated to make the land around it look natural, so that it's not this mound that comes up with a flat top. And it seems to me that that might require bringing in a substantial amount of soil, and I think the board might want to know more about that, you know, how much soil is going to be brought in and, and how it's, how it's going to be graded. I wondered also whether the board might want to look at a landscaping plan, and I was interested about what might be planned for that 12 to 15-foot area between the hubs and the edge of the slope, because that, that's what it is, basically.
You're talking about this area here?
Yeah.
I mean, we do have a landscape plan here, but obviously, it's just the very start of it. But our, but our desire is not just to preserve and restore what's there, but actually to create more of a regenerative landscape, because you're exactly right about the trees. There are a lot of new forest.
Right. Well, I was wondering, the trees, I was wondering to what extent those trees are holding the slope together. That was one question I had, that I think probably an engineer could help answer. And then that area that is to the west of the house, um, you know, by the time you take that rise off, you're probably going to be down to rock, and so if you brought in soil there.
Are you talking about here, where we were talking about the?
I'm talking about the area between the house and the very edge of the, of the slope. Anyway, I think it's an issue that the planning board might want to think about, and have some answers to. Another issue that occurred to me is, since something's going to be brought in there to reduce that rise, which probably has a fair amount of rock in it, there might need to be some precautions taken so that we don't have rock sliding down the, you know, down the slope. Now, let me see if I have anything else here. Oh, yeah. I visited twice, and it was kind of striking the difference one week made in what you could see from the house site. On my first visit, you stare from the house site into the tree canopy from the trees on the slope, and I mean, that's all you see, if you look straight down, you can see the rebel tides. So it seemed clear to me that there is going to be a desire to trim the canopy at some point. And so the question for the planning board is, does the board think that that should be part of this application, or should there be some kind of condition where if tree canopy trimming is to happen in the future, that they could come back and, and present that? And then the last thought I had, there was some comment that the preference would be to wait for approval from this board to really get into the engineering study for house construction. And I'm wondering if it's possible that that review might end up requiring some significant change to the site plan, whereby you would then need to come back, you know, and kind of stare it over. So those are my thoughts, those are my comments.
You alluded to the report from HAPAC, but I believe we received today, Gretchen, the CAB report, so Jim, perhaps you want to share that, because I think they had some strong reservations as well.
Sorry.
While you're doing that, I also think for the, that's a fun, I also think for the record, we received a letter from Wilderstein expressing their concerns about the variances that are being requested.
And we've been in conversation with them, and I know they attended the site visit.
Okay, good. All right.
Do you want me to summarize?
I do want you to summarize it, please, please.
So the findings as it relates to LWRP, they did not find any significant impact on the LWRP. Related to the Ag District, did not find it to have a significant impact on the Ag District. Related to the SASS, which is Historic District, this is where we did start getting into quite a bit of discussion about what they thought about the new build as it relates to that district and the views from Wilderstein, saying the proposed new build would have direct and permanent compromising impact on the aesthetic character of the district most significantly, and the alteration of views from the neighboring Wilderstein Historic Site at 330 Morton Road. And I think that probably summarizes most of these comments pretty well in that first sentence, that there's, there's a concern. That there's a concern about what's being proposed here as it relates to the adjacent property, which we heard from Craig as well earlier.
Just confirming, you can see it from Wilderstein?
It's visible from the trails, the trail system that's actually, and I think the report says that you can't see it from Wilderstein House nor from the carriage house, but from the, what would be the caretaker's cottage or the coachman's cottage, which is down the slope and somewhat to the west of Wilderstein. There's a trail system that starts there. And along that trail system, it comes very close. It shares the ravine with the applicant's property.
And that's all year round, essentially? Or is it season?
Seasonal. So I think it would be helpful to look at, what page is it, Gisela? There's a site plan that shows Wilderstein property.
I have it at 834.
834? Okay.
Well, right now, what I'm trying to get is the comments. And of course, this will be continued. So we're not in a position where we need to answer every question that's raised tonight.
Absolutely.
And I would encourage us not to make that part of the public process. So we can look at what you want to look at, but then I'm going to open it up to other questions from the board.
No, that's fine. And all of the comments that Ed had were good ones, which are engineering conversations that we're having. And we don't think that the engineering discovery will lead us to kind of come back here, which is why we feel comfortable coming back here and utilizing everyone's time once. But I think it is important to understand that while we are adjacent to the Wilderstein property, there's effectively, you know, our site is approximately five acres. There's another five-acre site that's part of Wilderstein's that is effectively that same size buffer between the carriage house and the main property. And the view we're talking about, you know, is when you walk on the pedestrian trail, there is one point that's closest to our property line that effectively, then you see, again, not year-round, but you see a glimpse of the east side of the site. And then, you know, the renderings obviously illustrate that very well. And I think, Edna, your point about it's a steep slope and therefore the canopy of the trees follow that. So you never have that view by which you get the clear line of seeing under the canopy of trees. And so effectively, you know, you can see here, you know, even the density. And again, this is an actual survey for only trees that are six-inch caliber and up. So this isn't even the real view you get because we weren't able to render or survey the underbrush and, you know, all of those other foliage that's there. So even during the winter, you know, visibility is someone standing on a pedestrian trail closest to our property line, nothing with regards to the historic structures and the visibility from those. And then you're also talking about the narrowest point of our house, you know, facing the property itself. Obviously, in the summer, you know, it's completely camouflaged. So we're kind of talking about this situation where we don't believe that it has any sort of negative impact. And to be honest, we think that the proposal is, I would call it not ambitious. I would call it, you know, we're trying to be very sensitive to the fact that we're utilizing this existing slope. We're minimizing, we're asking for less with regards to height, less with regards to massing. And ultimately, the value of the historical Wilderstein is that they're the ones that have that historic style and authenticity. We're not going to look to replicate that or diminish kind of their presence here, so.
One thing Warren noted when we were doing the walkthrough about the cantilever was that because it dematerializes the end of the house, it's a much less imposing end presented in the Wilderstein direction than if there were a wall going all the way down to the ground in the ravine. And so he seemed kind of interested in that aspect of having let the house just float that way instead of bulking it up below.
Well, just to sort of clarify a little bit with Delisa's question, the trails are as important as the house in terms of the overall historic nature of the property. So I would not personally distinguish between can you see it from the house or can you see it from the trails? You know, whether you can or can't see it from the property, I think, is the question. And clearly, you can at certain times of the year, given the variance requests that are before us and the zoning board.
And absolutely. And I think, and, you know, from the site visit, should be clear that you could see it from the as-of-right area as well. And so our hope is by making it a low profile, the visibility is ultimately less, whether it's 20 feet closer or further away. If we were to build kind of on the as-of-right within the massing, obviously, the visibility is more so.
Okay. Other planning board members' questions. Michael?
I have a couple of comments I'd read. I think that, I got a email today from Dave Pearson of the Health Department describing something I'd never heard of before, so not exactly right in terms of it. That the fill pad thing is going to be a super fill pad. It's of significant size. But he recommended the planning board review that and take that into consideration. I think that and also the engineering for the site, I'm sure a SWIP is going to be necessary given the disturbance on the site. And given the terrain, it's going to be a significant engineering undertaking. And I think that we need to refer this to CPL, our engineering consultants, to take a look at before we get into making approval.
Okay. All good suggestions. Anyone else?
I'll just put a button on kind of my question for it. I think engineering, it sounds very complicated. And I think absolutely no need to revert understanding of how that's done. I just, from, just to go over the view scenario again, is there any limitations? Should this ever get approved to require further buffering so that we protect that view and it becomes a...
It can be a condition of approval.
Okay. And that's it. My other question is that rendering through the woods, that's a real, that was the realistic rendering of that east side?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I got that right.
With fully surveyed trees and such.
That's one thought.
Yeah. It's, I have this memory of approaching the site and it does seem like there's a bit of a rise in topography before it drops off to where the site is. And this was, you know, looking at the view from the road, we never really, we never really see things like that, like to put on a 2D drawing. We do tend to see if there's a decline, you know, you don't just look level. You would be able to see, and especially because of the vegetation, the canopy is up here, you know, it might be visible where there are not some sort of a berm. Is there a little hillock between the road and the site?
There is, right here. It builds up here and then there's quite a large mound here. And we're not looking to change that. That's why we're, if you're sitting from board to road, that's why we're going around so as to utilize the topography there is now.
What the planning board originally approved in this platte was to build the house at that topmost point, which is about 20 feet higher than where we're proposing. The original platte has a planning board approving a house between the trail that we've been discussing and the carriage house. And then a second house at the very top of our sort of hillock that you mentioned. And so we're down lower than what was originally the design there. Yes, so that berm helps shield the house from the rain.
The berm you're talking about is here.
I think what you're referring to is maybe some pre-con conversations about what could happen. I don't think you've had any approvals on this.
Oh, no, I'm referring to the original platte. When this subdivision was approved, there's a house site for each parcel, the one that Wilderstein bought.
Established, okay, but, okay, I'm wigging. I just didn't want people to assume that there was already an approval in place for something.
And another point is that the trail that is kind of closer to this property is not really an original historic trail from the Wilderstein. This is a property that they acquired much later.
Which was a detail in that cab report that's worth clarifying. The Vaux Plan starts at the carriage house south.
There's a elder box plant.
Yeah.
Any other planning board comments?
Just one other comment and then it's, I think from Morton Road, the scene will look different because right now you have relatively...
Excuse me, is the line speaking up? We can't hear another signal.
You can't? I'm sorry.
Something's rolling out there, so it's...
It's almost gone.
Okay. From Morton Road, you saw the photo, right? There are trees, however, they're not big trees and it's not densely wooded. So behind that, you're seeing the canopy of trees down the slope. Most of that canopy, I believe, will be gone because it's either from the house site or it's from the driveway, right? I'm just pointing that out. So I think that the view from Morton Road is going to look different. It'll look, I guess, more thinly wooded or something.
Well, the renderings that we're showing is fully modeled and so any of the trees that would be removed are removed in the rendering. So we're not utilizing any of the canopy that wouldn't be there to screen the house and the view.
Well, we'll take a look at that. I'd like to open it up to the public at this point. Is there anyone here from the public who'd love to offer a comment? All right, well, let me summarize a few things. And as has been mentioned, this is, we tonight are taking up for the first time a referral to the ZVA. So that is what is going to initiate the ZVA referral on the project. And so that will begin tonight. The clock will start on that. Some things have come up, obviously, to be looking at, certainly about the super pad fill, the SWIP, and our referral to CPL. So there are a number of things that are going to want us to obviously be continuing this. And Jim, are there other things that you'd like to summarize here that should be part of our consideration? Is everyone in favor? Do we need a motion to refer it to CPL?
No, I don't think we need a motion.
I don't think we need a motion. I think it would just be part of our normal practice to do that. And maybe working on getting us some detailed information on the super pad fill and keeping us informed as to any changes you might make. I, knowing the calendar of the ZVA and how long that normally takes, since they haven't opened this, we're easily looking at several months before we'll have anything back from them. So it's my recommendation that this be continued to at least the first meeting in January as opposed to next month.
The ZVA closed their public hearing. I don't know if that's what you meant, they haven't opened.
They've closed their public hearing, but they haven't gotten anything from us in terms of a referral.
No, it's here for tonight.
Right. So they will, they will, they may assign it to somebody right up until they get this, but I just think we have too much outstanding information in terms of even getting a response from our engineer at CPL. So it's my recommendation that we continue the public hearing until the first meeting in January.
The one practical question is, we might be, in deciding to do that, pushing the project back a year because if this is the only place the septic can go and requires this kind of fill from DCDOH, and that fill has to settle through one freeze thaw cycle. If we wait until after the freeze thaw cycles, we are deciding to delay the project a year, which is, of course, a hardship we would like to avoid.
I understand. But I don't see how we can possibly get through the information we need to get through within 30 days.
Okay.
And to get the information back then.
Well, we wouldn't because the next, even if the ZVA moved next month, we can't move until after the ZVA makes their decision because this proposal is really entirely dependent on the ZVA's findings.
So maybe after us?
Right. And on the plan we have now, it'll be the first meeting of the month. So the earliest you could possibly even consider it would be December. That's assuming they made a motion next month, which is, I don't know. I won't speak for them.
So from a sequencing standpoint, you know, because of conversations about engineering, whether it's civil, the septic, or the structural, those are things that we feel comfortable, you know, being able to provide you, so that's not of concern. But when can we submit that to you where it makes a difference? You know, it does...
You can submit it as soon as you have it available and then we will forward it on to our engineering consultant.
So we can have that review concurrent with waiting for the ZVA?
Yes.
Okay. We just, obviously, we want to push.
That will run simultaneously.
Okay.
Thoughts from planning board members?
We won't be able to do anything in December that we can't do tonight because the ZVA will have done anything.
Probably not.
I think what would be helpful is, I don't know if we have all the engineering that we need to send to our department. You should have mentioned the other aspects of the engineering on the site that we're going to enter. And of course, as Dave Pearson recommended, the size and the position of the fill pad for this project really, he felt was quite significant. He's never sent me an email like that before. So we're going to need a good deal of the engineering information we completed to send to CPL so that they can review it.
And we have a good deal of the engineering completed because obviously, they already did an application with the Department of Health.
Yeah, that we will need so that, you know, if it comes in piecemeal, it just slows up his review process.
And is there a possibility, with the assumption that ZVA renders an approval for the variances, let's say, and then issuing the engineering, is there ever a scenario by which, you know, understanding that that really is the only location for the septic for the site, which is what Langin and everyone has rendered? Is there a way to be able to proceed to install the septic for the freeze thaw, even if it's ahead of the full approval?
There's no possible way. There's special use for it specifically just for that.
But that would have to be tied to something that's going in the ground. I don't think we want to approve just a septic.
And since it's such a critical aspect of the application, I think bifurcating it doesn't make sense to me.
Even if it's the only place to go. Obviously, he's not going to put that investment in without building some house. Thought the property was some house and so if it... We're just trying to kind of separate out the controls versus the variables. And right now...
There's one other consideration that you might keep in mind. Variances given are good for a year, within which time you have to pull the building permit or the variances disappear. So you want to keep that in mind. We just added that someone who just lost all the variances that they got for a project we agreed up with the ZVA to have to reissue.
Can they be renewed, Michael?
The ZVA, no, you have to start from scratch.
No, that wouldn't be a concern because we'd be able to, you know, get the development and all. But I guess just posing the idea to Alex's point of if the septic, if we miss the freeze thaw, then again, this whole thing kind of goes 12 months. And I recognize that you don't want to ever approve things in piecemeal, especially if one's contingent upon the other. But given that our septic really doesn't have any place else to go, it would be a little less contingent.
It's one of the constraints of the property is that your septic has nowhere else to go. And that's why we have to take it, take the issues so seriously.
Doesn't the septic, or at least the septic berm, intrude to some extent on the...
The Conservation Easement, which had an approval. Yeah, because they recognized that there was no place else to go, so they gave us that nine or 10 feet.
I was going to say, take into consideration as well that the size of the building is what's driving the size of the septic and where it can go. So...
I think most of that pad is that you have to do a 25-foot buffer around the sides of the septic. So we, changing bedroom count, we did look at that. Didn't materially change that.
Well, I'm not going to answer all these questions.
What is driving the size?
We're not going to answer all these questions. I announced at the beginning, we're going to have to, they take the room. And I still have a bunch of things here. So we still will be waiting for a good deal of information to pass on to our engineers, to talk to Dave Pearson again. We certainly can talk to you offline. You can communicate with Jim. We can put you in touch with, you're already talking to the Health Department. You can speak directly to our representative at CPL. So we'll do everything we can to move along the process so that you get the reviews in and you get the proper reviews back. So I think that we just need a motion as to continuing the public hearing. Now, I would ask someone to do that, please.
Will we continue the public hearing to our first meeting, Jim?
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Thank you.
All right, be in touch. And next up, David Alzania, 110 Old Albany Close Road, a minor subdivision. And Mark and Seth are prepared to present to them. And Mark and Seth are presenting. Yeah, I'm sorry. Jim is reminding me. I said we would do Alexander Lloyd's ZBA referral. So why don't we do that? Your minds have...
No, it's not. We just talked about it.
Yeah, since it's fresh in our minds, it sets acceptance of us. I'd like to circle back to the ZBA referral for later. Case 103 for Alexander Lloyd Morton Rose. So normally, as was what the case under the law came on earlier, we were asking the zoning board of appeals to use their judgment. Do we, in this case, because of the issues that have been raised by site visits, by certainly the CAB and by the neighbors, do we wish to indicate in this particular resolution that there are issues that they should concern themselves with? Or that they should pay special attention to the reports? Or how do you want to address that in this resolution?
Well, basically, I think almost any house, any place it could be built, would be visible from that area. And I frankly don't find it objectionable walking down that trail. I happen to like the house a lot. I think it's an extraordinarily difficult site, and I think there's still questions about whether it can be built there. But I don't really have... Yeah, I have a lot of questions about what they're proposing, but I don't really have a problem with the variances.
Yeah, I think Edna makes a good point. I think that variance is not the issue. The issue for me, can you really do this and do it properly? That's the issue for me as well. But not this particular variance. I don't think that's what really, for me, comes in.
Okay.
I think this is an instance of development on a previously undeveloped lot in a very important part of our community. And all along the... All along the river, we have these magnificent estates. And, you know, unless you're on the planning board and you have the full permit, you don't ever get to see what's there. And Wilderstein is one of the few opportunities, probably the only opportunity, where people have a chance to get down and see what's between the road and the river. And this is gonna be right along that path. So it is a very sensitive subject. I think it has to be taken very seriously. And I think we need to give some thought to how we want our community to grow and develop. And is this the type of development that we wanna welcome? Because it might not be the only one.
Okay. I am comforted by knowing that there's further buffers that could be made, and I find the visual stance to not be super invasive, which I was pleased to see from the rendering. But I do think protecting the view shedding, protecting that buffer would be important. I actually think many river estates that have been built over the past, you know, 20 years are much more invasive visually from the road, and many of them do not indicate historic structures or resemblance with width that are way bigger. So I really appreciate that they're so thoughtful about how it's placed and how, although I think Edna's right, there's going to be some impact from the road, but so much more minimal than so many of these estates we see on the river. And I appreciate that. And maybe there's further suggestions about landscape to even create a little more density back at the road. But my... So I have no problem with the variances. I think they're being thoughtful. And I think the construction, you know, with a proper buffer from Wilderstein is not a concern of mine. However, I totally agree that it has to be safely engineered, and we need that suggestion to look forward.
Okay. Anyone else?
So what does that mean for our referral back? Do you wanna do a referral with no or minor issues? Just recommending they study it on the facts and the neighboring input? Or do you wanna give them specific concerns, specifically related to environmental planning concerns for the variances? Not the structure or anything else. It's only the variance request, which essentially is setbacks.
Well, my understanding is that the concerns that were raised, particularly by Wilderstein, relate to the variances. And so I would like to be respectful of the information we received from Wilderstein. And I think the issues, as we're pointing out in terms of variances, are minor. But I would like to flag that, you know, that the adjacent historic property, you know, has raised some issues that we'd like them to take a special look at or to take extra time looking at that and taking it into consideration.
I have a question. Does one of the variances affect the location of the house next to Wilderstein?
The coach house?
Yeah.
I believe, yeah. The footprint is very, very small. I wonder what it is now. So they're extending, you know, past... Yeah, on the Wilderstein side.
So the distance between the house and the lot line?
Yes.
Will be less than what would be permitted under the current setbacks, yes.
Okay. I got a little confused about going east.
And that's the issue that's being raised by Wilderstein, and that's the issue that I would like to ask the zoning board of appeals to take a look at.
It's a 150-foot requirement. They're proposing 62 and 1/2. We're on a, what, a five or eight-acre lot? Something to that effect, I think, and a 20-acre zone.
Right. So it's a significant variance.
It is a significant variance.
And if it was moved back to that line, it would be considered less visible.
Correct.
Just to clarify to your point, is that within... That includes the... They were saying there's a five-acre parcel between where the structures are? It crosses over that to where the structures are, is what you're saying? Or it's within that five-acre parcel?
It's to the property line of Wilderstein. So when she's talking about five acres between, it's additional property, but it's still part. So that was my point earlier about it's still Wilderstein. Is everybody okay with that? Jim, do you wanna...
So essentially, a referral back stating that we want them to, you know, look at the issues, study the facts, consider input of the neighbors, but in particular, give consideration to the Wilderstein property comments that have been submitted? Something to that effect?
Satisfied, please, everybody?
I think that's there, yeah.
Motion, please?
So...
Thank you. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you for indulging us. It'll be much better in the end. All right.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, Seth, take it away.
Good evening. Seth Stickel with Mark Remitzke, the LSPC, here this evening to represent David Alexania, owner and applicant of 110 Old Albany Post Road. The parcel is an approximately 49-acre parcel on the east side of Old Albany Post Road. Jim, if we could go to sheet four, please? The project is proposing a conservation density subdivision. There will be a total of four lots. The conserved area meets the 65% requirement for the RC5 district. The remaining lots, Lot 1 will incorporate the existing residents. And then we're asking for an additional two lots. Those lots will all be on what is the western side of the parcel. The parcel rises up considerably from Old Albany Post Road to the existing home site, where it then levels out. The majority of the parcel is early to mid-secessional, so clearly old farmlands that have been allowed to reestablish growth. For the most part, that's very true along the western side of the property. As it moves to the east, you do get what appears to be a bit more of an older growth in this area. There are substantial stone walls throughout what is an existing farm road, as well as paddocks that break up the property. The property is bounded by stone walls on all sides. The portion of the wetland on this side of the property, we're requesting a 50-foot buffer from that, which is in keeping with the building envelope requirement, which is also 50 feet. As part of a conservation density subdivision, we did walk through this board with the four-to-five-step method to establish where these lots were based on habitat, as well as steep slopes and those items. So that's what informed this. We also worked with a land conservancy to try to place these sites so that they were beneficial to that land conservancy as well. Since we were here last, we were requested to take a look at archaeology based on the Phase 1A literature review. They did require that they go back out and assess the area potential effect for any findings. They did not come up with any findings in their test pits, and we have submitted that report to the board as well. You know, we also had contacted HAPAC. HAPAC, I do not know if they have provided you with a report yet at this time. But I do know that we have been in contact with them. They did not want to have a site visit, and they were going to prepare that report. We did get in contact with the CAB. The CAB, Sharon was out on the property with me. Sharon is also prepared, and CAB has submitted a report. That is part of the record. And we also had some site visits with the planning board members. Just before we get into any of the comments on the site visit and, you know, public comments, just wanted to note that the applicant is pursuing potential driveway alternatives with the land trust at this moment. So we will ask that the board keep the public hearing open so that we can address those, provide all the detail that we need for the board at that time.
Okay. Jim, anything you wanna add?
No, we did get a review from HAPAC. At the end, they did review the Phase 1A1B and said that that was sufficient. It's submitted. I guess that that would then, you know, fall in with HAPAC saying that they're okay with this. But I don't think we received a letter per se from HAPAC, as we think it would. Other than that, no, nothing new. Just that I think at some point, we wanna formally go through the steps as we review the project.
Yeah, I think when we come back at the next meeting, we will just once again wanna touch on the four steps so that that's part of the public record at that time. I don't think we need to do it tonight since you're asking for a continuation. If that's okay with you. Just because, for purposes of the audience here, this conservation subdivision is something that is not common in Ryback, and actually, it's never been done before. So we're conscious of making sure that we touch on all those four steps that are required as part of the law.
Sure.
So we'll do that. I would ask for reports from those making the site visit?
Yeah. Of course, I missed Michael while I was there, but went, got to meet Seth. You know, it's a really... It's a really unique property. I was really just mesmerized in a lot of ways by these, you know, old farm roads and stone walls. And I definitely appreciated the protection of those. You can get some views from neighbors in some of these... Some of these lots, but it did feel thought out. You know, the driveway's quite long, and it seems like the houses that would be placed in those areas are, you know, well-placed in buffering from one another. And the wetlands felt very protective as well.
There was a question that came in, and I think... I don't know who it ended up going to from someone who couldn't be here tonight. And I'm not answering them. I'm forwarding on progression to you. And I believe one of the questions was whether or not the conserved lands was open to the public. I think I know the answer to that, but I'd like that you answer that.
Sure. Certainly, we did receive the email comments on progression and did respond to those formally as well. So the question was just about whether access specifically from the west side, so up the driveway, would be available to the conserved land. And at this time, the answer to that is no, due to liability and privacy. The conservation group that's interested in this parcel... Jim, if we could just go to the site location map just a little bit? Does own this parcel here, up in the north, actually. Just one little further up. Sorry. No worries. Does own this parcel here. There was just some discussion that they would be interested in trying to find a connection through here, and that does have access on permanent, so...
I see. So although for the present and the near future, there will not be, but they're exploring opportunities for that to possibly happen?
That's correct.
Okay. What is that other parcel? Is that the terminals preserve? Or what is that?
I believe that it is.
Did you go as well?
Well, actually, I went... Police wasn't able to go that day, and so I went out there. We spent almost an hour out there walking through, which is remarkable, the stonework, the stone walls. It's all still there if you really wanted to see how a farm had been laid out. But to me, even with greater significance is the ability to preserve all these wetland areas and the intervening areas between them, not fragmenting it. The way they're putting the houses on this are the areas that are least significant from an ecological standpoint. And I think the preservation of this very unique ecosystem or series of ecosystems up here, I think, has remarkably benefited the town. And I think this is very, very well thought out. I was very impressed. I understand Seth picked up six picks, but I went to pick free, so I guess... I guess you were the track.
Thanks, Seth, for making yourself a practice.
Well, I think it's very well thought out. One of the best thought-out subdivisions I've seen. The emphasis is actually being placed on preservation of a very unique ecological area in our town.
Other planning board members? All right. I would open it up to the public. If there's anyone here from the public who'd like to comment. If you are, I would invite you to come up to the front so we can get you on the camera and, you know, allow you to be seen by the whole world.
Hey, thank you. My name is Chuck Listrom. I live at 94 Old Albany Post Road. And we really don't have a problem with the subdivision. See the house in the winter. There'll be a driveway above me. Our concern is the water in Old Albany Post Road. Let me see if I can orient myself. Yeah, this is my house. This is my neighbor's house. There'll be a house right up here, and a septic field, and the road coming right. There's quite a bit of water that comes down off of this hill. The water from my property, my next-door neighbor's property, and the property, the field to the south, all come, and they collect and they drain right around through here. And they... Now that comes out to Albany Post Road, under my driveway is a 12-inch culvert. The town engineer, when I built my house 25 years ago, asked me to put in a 12-inch culvert because he wanted to control the flow. So my driveway becomes kind of a dam. The water comes flying through there. It goes down to the road into a very shallow catch basin, out of which there's a 4-inch pipe that takes it down the road theoretically to the next catch basin, maybe 300 feet away. So as a result, with all of the water, it flows out onto Old Albany Post Road. And especially in the winter, springtime, the road gets icy. It makes a mess. I mean, this project is maybe gonna marginally add. I'm not worried about them. It's there. The water flows in that direction. There's gonna be a couple of houses and roads, so it'll be marginally increased, but I'm not worried about that. We... I'm here with a couple of neighbors. Would like to see the town address it. It's really simply a matter of putting in a catch basin that's deep enough and put at least a 12-inch pipe down to the next catch basin, which will then cross the road. And it crosses the road there and dumps just north of the trooper barracks. And then it flows out to Route 9 where there's big ditches and stuff. So that's our concern. I don't know if it'd be a part of this project or something the town could do, but we wanted to, you know, voice that concern. There have been complaints in the past, but nothing gets done. The result was I came in and put in the 4-inch pipe, which makes... And then the 4-inch pipe goes down a little ways and goes to the surface to a very shallow ditch. So that's our concern. Subdivision, the houses is fine. You know, the preserved land is great. It's just we wanna see if some attention could be made to this problem.
Okay. Seth, Mark, you... I mean, I know from prior applications along that road that this man is speaking truth.
You know, I actually have an opportunity to see the highway superintendent quite often, so I'll certainly bring it to his attention, and we'll go out there and take a look at it.
Be glad you'll come to show your problem.
I also think maybe we can...
Give me your contact information?
I think also maybe we can, as a board, make a recommendation that the town look into this. We obviously don't have the power to fix it for you, but...
Yeah, well, I understand.
But I do know...
We just wanna make it known it's a good opportunity to do it.
Yeah, and I, and I see some other faces in the room who have property that come out on that road. And I know we've seen this situation before, so it seems like a good time.
Yeah, we spoke to four neighbors today and they were, you know, they couldn't make it, all of them, but.
Good, good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Yes, come on, line up.
So my name's Frank Palaia. I live at 120 Old Albany Post Road on the kind of north side of the property. My concern is the driveway. I understand there's going to be a roundabout made so cars can sort of go around each other. Seems like there's going to be a little bit of traffic on that driveway. And I'm wondering, is it going to be widened? If, let's say, two cars are coming at each other a little bit up from the roundabout? How are they going to get around each other and that kind of congestion that this seems to perhaps create? And that's, that's my question.
Seth, you want to answer?
Certainly. One of the unique aspects of the conservation, let's say, subdivision is that we're going to try to utilize the existing driveway in its entirety as a common driveway to this point. There's a ridge line that runs right straight through here. So most of the drainage actually runs towards the wetlands here in this direction. As far as the driveway goes, the only changes proposed to the driveway are actually at the entrance. So we'll be putting in a formal paved apron, which is part of the requirements for a, a common driveway. That paved apron has a minimum width requirement of 16 feet, which is about the width of the driveway as it exists. It'll extend from the property line to Old Albany Post Road. And it'll have 15-foot radiuses on it. That's a standard, you know, common driveway entrance. It actually kind of reduces, actually, the area that's there now. The gravel actually has kind of widened itself out there. And there's an existing culvert that is in that area. So we are not proposing any changes to the, the existing driveway as it is, widening. At its closest point, I believe the driveway is 39 feet from the northern property boundary here. So it would remain as it exists. There is an area that has been created here that already has potential for a pull-off so that you could have passing vehicles on either side. And we may intend to actually put another one here just for safety considerations.
I have another question.
Sure.
What about sewage system for these houses up here? Because we all have wells and there's the culverts. So what, what's the situation with that?
Certainly. So one of the things that we wanted to do, understanding that we did have a few homes located here on the western side of us, is take a look at their, location of their wells and their sanitary disposal systems. We looked at filed maps as well as documented, you know, what is in the field. The wells are located on this plan with 200-foot offsets. The requirement is 100 feet if you're downhill or 200 feet if you're downhill. So these are downhill, and so we must maintain 200 feet. So these are actually the 200-foot radiuses that you see on the plan now. So the sanitary disposal systems will be located outside of that 200-foot required area. And again, there's a ridge line that runs straight through this property here. And all of the surface drainage, as well as some subsurface, moves in this direction towards the. Seth, can you point out where the, where the septic fields are? So we have done, so conducted some deep tests with the Dutch County Department of Health. We did those in this area. This has, the plan has evolved just slightly, so we've also done some investigation in this area. So the proposed home site is located on the east side of that ridge line. And this would be the primary septic system, and this would be potentially a reserve area. As you come around towards the south-east, the sanitary disposal systems for the other lot will be located back here. The existing home sanitary disposal system is located just to the north of the end of the driveway, and their well is located here. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else from the board? Okay. Are we ready to press the public hearing?
No.
Oh, that's right, at your request. Do you have a date in mind?
Next month would be excellent.
Okay. So that would be the December 5th meeting. And at that time, you'll be prepared to sort of run through the four steps.
We would love to do that, yeah. I think we would help clarify just that cul-de-sac because one of the plans does show a cul-de-sac at the lower portion of the driveway that allows frontage to establish the lot density. So it may help answer some more questions from the public as well. So we'll do that at that time.
So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing? Michael, second to Lee, is always in favor. Close, extensions, December 5th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if there are others in the audience that have other questions, certainly get them into the planning board as soon as possible so we can redirect them to Mark. Next up, Al Vingemar. 303 Route 308, site plan reviewing special use permit for minor subdivision. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Kaminsky, this is a continuation of, right? A continuation of public hearing for Al Vingemar. It's a two-lot minor subdivision being proposed. It's a parcel that is 12.67 acres in size. It is, has frontage on New York State Route 308 right here. There's an existing residence here, existing barn, an existing driveway for, to the barn. This application proposes to create parcels, as I said, it's two-lot minor subdivision. This is parcel number, let's see. This is, that is parcel. Thank you, appreciate it. This is parcel 3, 3A right here. Its size is 6.9 acres. And then what's also being proposed is a second parcel here, which is parcel 3B, which is five point, about 5.3 acres in size. The reason for continuation of this public hearing is, last meeting, there was discussion with this board and adjoining neighbors with regard to access for parcel number 3B. It's, this location is actually unique in its, in its location because right at this point right here is the end of Peacock Road. And so when Peacock Road was created as part of this subdivision to the north, it extended property boundary to the northern boundary of this parcel right here. And so there's actually a 50-foot strip of land right here that allows for potential access for lot number 3B to this parcel. And after presenting information to this board and to the public through also, the previous scenario had showed a possible common drive connection off of New York State Route 308. That would still maintain access to parcel 3A and then have a longer driveway that would access parcel number 3B. Following that discussion, you know, at the last public hearing, it was decided that, or not decided, to move forward with the application to eliminate frontage for parcel 3B to New York State Route 308 and, and consider access off of Peacock Road. And in considering that access off of Peacock Road, it requires a waiver consideration by this board. Because of the, on Peacock Road, it's a, a section of it is, this cul-de-sac is, you know, classified as a dead end. And the current subdivision code in the town of Reinbeck allows for 12 access points off of a dead-end road. This, and there's, so there's currently 14. And this proposal would be allowing a 15 access point off of, off of Peacock Road. Part of the discussion and consideration at the last meeting was to, you know, further identify this particular parcel with a, you know, with a development envelope that would restrict, you know, restrict the location of the building through here. And also, you know, consideration of how access would, you know, specific access would be off of Peacock Road. So it, it enters through here, and then this is a small development envelope that would allow for construction of a residence and any, you know, the necessary components for, for, you know, construction of the residence with regard to approval from Dutchess County Health Department for water and sewer. So some test holes were advanced in this area, witnessed by the health department. And so in, in, in developing this area, I've made the determination that you can, you know, fit a absorption field and a well and a residence and a driveway in this location. In addition to that, we, there was some, you know, discussion with the neighbors at the last meeting. And so subsequently, we submitted materials to this board for the consideration responding to some concerns that the neighbors had, along with, I also submitted an additional plan that showed, you know, the, you know, potential location for a residence here relative to all the adjoining parcels. And it, you know, it's an aerial photo overlay that also shows. Yeah, that one right there, Jim. And so you can see here, this is a potential, this is the potential house location. And so through the aerial photo, you can see where the other residences are located on Peacock Road. And I just, I also had the associated distances. And so you can see from here that it's, you know, part of the choice in this location was it's an open field right now. And so there's also, and you can see that there's a vegetated buffer, pretty heavy tree, a tree area between this proposed location and all the adjoining. And so also, I think there was also a request from neighbors that, you know, some consideration be placed and, you know, some, you know, restrictions for construction be considered as part of the application, which, which aligns with some of the deed restrictions that are imposed on this subdivision. And that information was submitted to this board. And so in summary, it's, you know, it's a, you know, although I did testing through here and quite confident we can, you know, develop approvable water supply and sewage disposal for, to meet Dutchess County Department of Health requirements, the application is, is requesting, you know, approval of a minor subdivision and filing of this as a non-jurisdictional subdivision. And therefore, you know, the, you know, the owner of this, of this land would apply at a later date to the health department for approval. And I did prepare a, you know, an engineer certification that I feel that is, you know, this area will support on-site water and sewer.
Okay. Jim?
Mark, just to answer the one question I had, just confirming we had that letter, couldn't remember. So thank you for that. You know, the, the original went to the Z B A for the, the access to Peacock Road. It came back to the planning board from them saying that it's a planning board issue that would have to be considered for a waiver. So if the planning board, if, when the planning board looks forward with an approval resolution, I do have some language in there regarding specifically providing that waiver as well as a statement stating that I think we, in the resolution, should state that no access will be taken to 308. Which is a discussion before and one of the concerns raised by the neighbors. The fact that we're putting a parcel line here pretty much prohibit that in passing. The original discussion, remember, was either a shorter driveway to Peacock or a much longer one down to 308. And this is where we have planned it. So there would be a request for that in that resolution. Otherwise, I have no other comments.
Okay. Comments, questions, planning board members?
I think that it makes sense to have the access from Peacock Road. Eliminates yet another driveway along 308. And I don't see that it's a detriment to any neighbor.
Anyone else?
I think it's worthwhile to encourage development in distributed clusters where this would be joining an existing cluster of development rather than existing as a random place out, you know, in the wilderness. So it would afford the, the lot, the privacy that the lot size determines and also the sense of community that you would get in being part of the existing neighborhood.
I also note for the board, I did meet with the highway superintendent and he has, you know, conceptually approved access from Peacock, cul-de-sac.
It also does help to preserve the visual seen value of that here from 308 that we all have used to.
I remember some concern expressed about dirt being tracked on to Peacock Road from construction. I don't know what, what might be done to prevent that.
It's simple to power off of stations. Right, Mark?
Yeah, and actually, so when the response. We had, and we had a response document that I believe, you know, was concerning the, you know, some of the neighbors concerned. And I just noted in here that, you know, as part of erosion sentiment control report that's developed in single-family residences, a tracking pad is always established, you know, prior to entering, you know, the town, county, state highway. So there would be a tracking pad there to collect any, you know, motor dirt before entering down the street.
Anyone? Members of the public? Is there anyone here interested in addressing this application? Now can I close the public hearing? May I have a motion to. Thank you, Michael, second. Please, always in favor. All right. Close, extensions. Jim, do you want to walk us through the approval resolution?
So for Al Vingemar, asking the planning board to disert the application for minor subdivision through Town Book Chapter 125. Reaffirming the classification actually should be unlisted, which doesn't make a difference from type 2, but it's unlisted action. Based upon review submitted information, including reports from the planning board members on the site visit, finding the proposed work is consistent with the objectives stated in subdivision land. The, I'm going to skip number three for a second, I'll go back to it. Number four, with respect to the minor subdivision, finding the proposed actions consistent with Town Book Chapter 101 and approve the application inclusive of the minor subdivision plan sheet prepared by Mark Kaminsky dated July 5, 2022. And then number three is the item I just mentioned before. Based upon review of the potential access points, discussion of public hearings and input from the public, the planning board will hereby waive the subdivision code requirement that only 12 lots be permitted on a cul-de-sac and permit the applicant access to parcel from Decock Lane as it has been found to be a safer access result of small and physical footprint that might have resulted from installation of the driveway, mentioned in Route 308. Sorry, it's something else. It's where I used to live. And has not been found to create a moderate or significant impact on the existing Decock Lane properties. As a condition of the waiver, the property is prohibited from taking access to 308. There's only one access point for the property to be permitted. I'll make those, no changes.
All right, motion to accept.
So.
Thank you. Thank you, Edna, I'll hold the board. Michael?
Yes.
John?
Hi.
Please, hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Edna?
Hi.
And I vote out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Centerline Communications, AT&amp;T. Utility pole near 16 Charles Street. This is a site plan and special use permit for the installation of small cell on the utility pole. We have received a request from Centerline Communications, AT&amp;T, to continue the public hearing, I believe, until December 5th, Gretchen, is that correct? So we will be doing that. I believe you, as we said at our last meeting, we were in touch with Grant Lyons, our planning board attorneys, who did some research for us, based on the question of what, what authority does the planning board have? And they have responded, and I believe we've all received copies of that communication. So that is available to you. And I would say to the public that, Gretchen, will it be posted or put in the file? What we received from Grant Lyons?
Yeah, it'll be on the file.
Okay, so members of the public, if you're interested. So members of the public, if you're interested in seeing that communication from our attorney relative to this application, it should, Gretchen, available tomorrow, available when? Soon as possible. All right.
Thank you.
But if, that does not preclude anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening if you'd like to. The floor is yours.
Richard McAluso, 16 Charles Street. Again, I'm not opposed to the applicant's intentions. I just don't believe it's necessary to have it next to any residential home, not just mine, anyone's. I've walked the area. Central Hudson has easements wherever there's telephone lines, which are everywhere. And we were told at the last meeting, this is for the benefit of the train station. So I don't know if the applicant, AT&amp;T, could request that from them. But Central Hudson has plenty of locations. I had some photographs, but I think I'll submit them in advance rather than hand them out. And one last thing in the, September 28th issue of Architectural Digest, they chose the 55 most beautiful small towns in the United States. Two were chosen from New York State. Number 54 was Cold Spring and number 14, or 15, was Rhinebeck. And in the article in Architectural Digest, about number 14, the caption is about 30 words, and this is approximately half of those words. It's along the Hudson River and affords views of the Catskill Mountains. And that's why I'm here. Anyone that moves to Rhinebeck, Rhine Cliff, it's the farms, it's so many beautiful things. But the Catskills are part of it. The Hudson River is part of it. In these photographs, and there's only four of them, the views out my window are this pole. The Catskills are that way. I know it's a small box, but it's just not necessary. When they're putting in a new pole, they're not even using the existing pole. They're going to take out that pole, put in a larger pole. I hope it's wood, not metal. But I look at it. There's homes behind me up the hill, which are in the photographs. They see the same pole. In fact, my property, which is landscaped with stone walls over 15 years, from all those paths, I see this pole. I'm retired and I do not want to look at a small or large cell, whatever it's called. So thank you for listening, and I will submit the photographs.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing if you decide over there.
Sure.
Second, Michael, almost in favor?
Aye.
All right. Closed, abstentions. Thank you. That brings us to the last public hearing this evening, and that is for Rockledge, 492 Ackertook Road, condo units, um, site plan approval, special use permit, and wetlands permit. Mark? I'm Rick, you were showing my similarity. And is recusing yourself with the record? I'll indicate that, please.
So in summary, um, you know, Rock, Rockledge is back. And so we've made a submission about five weeks ago with materials relative to, you know, development of the site plan. There were other materials that were submitted just to, you know, I went through some, I went through notes, you know, planners' notes and other comments that have been made, you know, over the, over the time this project's been in front of the board, you know, with an attempt to just, you know, organize all the materials so the board, you know, had all materials in front of them to properly review and, you know, or continue review of the project. And so, um, and, you know, with that, I, you know, there were, there was some engineering information. We included some architectural information. I included, you know, landscaping information, um, you know, just in, in response to some of those comments that I saw. I note today that, and there were, there were also, you know, the thrust of it was to answer a, I believe it was a July 2021 demo from CPL with regard to, you know, engineering issues or, you know, just questions and comments relative to the project. And so, you know, submission made five weeks ago, you know, started to answer that. But it wasn't actually until today that we're able to finalize all engineering drawings relative to stormwater design. And that information has been submitted to the board this evening or this afternoon at 4:00, along with all information sent to CPL. Included, and it includes revised grading plans that I can certainly walk the board through now, or, you know, certainly we're going to ask for, you know, continuation of the public hearing as CPL will have the opportunity to review the documents. It now includes a full stormwater report, which took, took us longer to develop, you know, because we took great care in developing this document. It also includes, we've received Friday, last week, we received information from WSP with regard to water supply and sewage disposal information. It's actually design of the sewage treatment plant, collection system, the design of the water system, water treatment and distribution. And so that information is now available to the board and its consultants. You know, that being said, I know it's, you know, it's been a long evening for everyone. I'm certainly here to, you know, answer questions or, or, you know, discuss some material, but I'll take the boards, the, how they wish to proceed.
Jim, comments?
No, not really. We've been looking at this from a planning perspective for several years, and several years before I was working with the town. From a planning perspective, I think we've actually talked about all the elements. Nothing's really changed in quite a while. My next step really is to start working on secret documentation for the planning board to consider, but I need to wait until we kind of get all the engineering taken care of and hear from CPL before I really want to get too far into that. That effort done once or twice, and so I'm going to wait on that. But no, from a planning perspective, nothing's really changed. Discuss all the issues.
And you yourself, Mark, who made all this information to question?
Yes, I did. I sent it digitally. I've also made hard copies because it's quite a bit of material. The drainage report is a thousand pages, the, you know, the water, you know, the water design, multiple drawings and 500 pages of documents. So I plan on delivering in person all that information to CPL tomorrow, but they do have the digital information right now.
Okay. And I'm sure the question will come up. Hard copies will be available in town hall?
Absolutely. Tomorrow I'll drop off copies of plans and all documents that were submitted. Just need to know the number.
You only need one for the file if it comes in. Do you want your own copy of all that or not?
Well, I see some people shaking their heads at receiving a thousand-page document.
No, and truthfully, even to CPL, for example, the drainage report, we synthesized it to 100 pages. I mean, there's a whole section of calculations that it was just a waste of paper. If they choose to go through it digitally, it'd seem more effective to be done.
All right. Gretchen, um, help me under, help me share with the public, if they're interested in looking at these new documents, the best way for them to access them, I mean, they certainly can access them online.
They'll be online, but the best way is to contact me and set up an appointment just to make sure, because we do take lunch now between 12:30 and 1:00, so I may not be there.
And there's, you know, there's still procedural steps to be taken to get into the building, the residual from COVID. So I don't want you just showing up and feeling disappointed that you didn't. You know, Gretchen's contact information is available on the website. Be in touch with her. We'll ensure that we have copies there so that anyone wanting to come in and spend their time with them, that's very, very doable. So if there's nothing from the planning board, I would turn it back to the public and ask those who wish to make comment to come up. And Mark, you can hang around. I mean, certainly up there, and if people have questions that you want to choose to address tonight, that's fine as well. So, members of the public.
People have asked before, the link to all applications before the planning board is on the town website. It's right at the top of the planning board page. So if you click on this, it'll take you to all the current public applications.
Thank you, Jim.
This is really just a letter I've been meaning to write for a long time. I keep everything to hand before I give my two cents here. Thank you. You don't have enough papers.
Never enough.
So should I just read the letter or do you want?
It's entirely up to you. You can read it or you can summarize it.
Okay. So, I'm Trish Gerloyes, and I live at 278 Ackertook Road. So regarding the petition, there, there was some talk months ago about the petition that had been circulated and that there was some talk about it, people not knowing what they were signing. And I just want to say that that was the only petition going around. And although I didn't agree with all the requests that go forth, I do agree that the Rockledge project is too big for our neighborhood. I signed the petition in opposition to the project, and my opposition remains. But to say that the petition is invalid because people didn't know what they were signing is, I think, condescending. I think people did know what they were signing. So just wanted to make that point. And then also, we live on Ackertook Road, and we being my husband and myself. And when we bought our property, the zoning was five acre zoning. And we could have subdivided that property into three lots. Instead, we sold some of our land to my sister-in-law who lived next door so they could bring their grandfather's three-acre property into conformity. We had also heard that there was some mention that, what, why should we care about five acre zoning? Because there's so many little lots around there, it's, it doesn't really conform anyway. But we were satisfied, so now we own three, 13 acres instead of the original 15. We were satisfied with five acre zoning and didn't want to see more smaller lots in our country neighborhood, which has several historic homes built in the 1700s and 1800s. Our house, for example, was built in the 1840s. If you move along Ackertook and Vlije Roads, you can spot these antique homes that were there before indoor plumbing and electricity. These homes are farmhouses, reminding us of our history as a town. A trip down our quiet country roads is an interesting and charming experience. The old roads are every bit as historic as the houses along them. Our fondness for the area and its character makes us want to preserve the way it is. And then in addition, I have two questions. If this project goes through and the traffic increases on the road and we decide, okay, we're finished because now our neighborhood is ruined, does that mean we can do the same thing? Can we go out and say we're going to take our remaining 13 acres and put a couple of condominiums out there and cash in? Just, I mean, where does it end? And then finally, my final question, and these aren't rhetorical questions. My final question is, who is going to be responsible for this housing development? When the, when the developers are finished, they leave? Is there a homeowners association? What if our worst fears come through? What if the stream becomes polluted and smells all the time? What if our water supply gets, gets depleted because we all have wells in the area? So who is going to be responsible? Who's going to, who's going to answer to the rest of the neighbors who could be negatively impacted by this? So that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the public?
Hi, everybody. My name's Hans Baum. I live next to my sister-in-law Patricia at 250 Ackertook Road. Been there for 30 years. Grew up in a rural place on White School Ash Road since 1965. I've been a linebacker. So I know what rural is. It feels like this project is trying to jam a village into a rural place. It's going to upend the traffic. It's a quieter road. Lots of people love to walk on it. If it's half the size, I think we should be knocking the speed limit down to 25, 20 in spots. If you've ever driven from Route 9 up to where Burger and Ackertook meet, that's the windiest old road you've ever been on in your life. Probably an old Indian man that looked to skirt the swamps as it came up. You shouldn't be going more than 20 on that. Come down Burger, nice big fat road, lots of people walk on it, and rarely are people even doing 35. They're 40, they're 45, they're 50. They go past my house coming down Vlije, coming down Ackertook, past Kipsburging. You can't believe how fast these guys zip by there. Should be speed bumps. Should be radar. Should be giving tickets out, you know, with, with radar. Slow down what's already going on. Put in 36 units there, two to three bedroom, one to two million apiece. This is going to be a village in a rural spot. These people aren't going to be out doing what we do in a rural secluded quiet place, which is why we moved in there, built 30 years ago. It's a ten piece of land. Got to sit back and quietly make your little opus, your Opus 40. You know, I'm at Opus 30 right now. That's not what's going to be going on up there. They're going to be traveling back and forth, sightseeing, getting out. You should be probably in the village so they can walk instead of drive. I'm worried about the wells. I think that when that well survey was done, it was quite a wet year. Fallsburg goes by my house and cuts through my land. It was mostly dry this summer. It was a much drier year. What does happen when our wells start to fail, if they do? Who is responsible for that? How do you prove, right, what's going on? And while we're allowing that, in the proposal anyway, to tap into the common communal aquifer, we're at the same time allowing them to discharge your waste into the Fallsburg through a treated plant. I've lived there long enough to have been twice recipient of the most obnoxious odor you've ever smelled in your life unless you've worked in sewers, when that plant went bad twice when daytop was up there. Everybody in the neighborhood thought their sewer had gone bad. We're all checking and pumping our, you know, our septic tanks. It was a mess. And finally, you know, it was understood, and it's very odd how the, how it, how the odor kind of flowed through the hills and the dales to get to us and kind of settled in. But it did kind of settle right in that area. It was really bad. I'm concerned about the historic nature of that property. It's quite a beautiful piece of property. The dicing up of it into smaller parcels, cleaving off with lines that I think would have had both the Democratic and Republican gerrymandering committees blushing with how egregious those lines are to make that happen. It's unbelievable. And by reading the historic, you know, clauses, how you're supposed to, you know, look at these things, if you're going to do something to them, to alter them, it should be benefiting the community. I don't understand how that's benefiting. I don't understand how that benefits the community at all. Yep, I'm done, thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi Kara, Kara QL, 467 Accro Hook Road. I just have a couple of things tonight that have, have come up. First of all, copies of the materials, if we have consultants to have access to, can we request hard copies for consultants that we want to look over the various plans?
They can be, you can do a foil request and they give you a sense of the printer and you can get them up because you'd have to pay for them if you wanted to do it that way. Excuse me, you can download them off the website as well, off the Google Drive and you could actually send them to a printer that way electronically and they can print them up if you wanted to.
Or if they're in the area, they can make an appointment and come in.
Right, okay. Thank you. Secondly, I just was curious, while, while we've got Mark here too, the phases of this development, my recollection was that the adaptive reuse portion of the development had to be done first and in the latest materials, it looks like the phases are divided into infrastructure first and then both adaptive reuse and new build simultaneously. And I was wondering if I had misunderstood about the requirement of the adaptive reuse to go first or is it required?
I don't think there was a requirement here, but I'll, I'll let Mark give you a specific response.
Um, we, I mean, we recently just developed a phasing plan, but you know, for storm water, it's obviously you need to develop infrastructure first and then after that it's, I think it's, I'll just continue discussion with the developer with regard to, you know, a development of structures and they'll provide a response to that.
Okay, thank you. And then also, as Hans spoke earlier too, our concerns about water and looking, I know there's been a lot of talk over the years about choosing plantings that should be established in the first year or two and then not require much irrigation and things like that, but nevertheless, in the plan, it still allows for irrigation in perpetuity annually of a certain amount. And to that end, we would really like to understand if you could consider some rainwater. I know you're using rainwater for the water right around the homes and the little rock gardens and things like that, but really looking into either gray water or rainwater for irrigation of wider parts of the property. And to that point as well, in my extremely limited understanding of waste treatment plants, according to the develop, according to the WSP report that's on file now, it does say that the volume proposed by the development is sort of the minimum level of development to get the plant to function correctly and that in the event that they get hard enough, there's not enough flow through the system, that the system needs to be flushed. So I would like to also ask about alternative water sources for the flushing of that system as and when it's needed, as perhaps that might have been the source of the smell in the past as opposed to the sludge removal, which I think is widely believed to be the culprit.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess Mark, the question for you is, I'm sorry, I missed your hand.
That's okay. I'm a little bit confused about, I'm Paty Lake, so I live at 225 Vli Road and it's unclear to me, are all of the documents that are associated with the submission going to be available online? Is that?
Yes.
True, they will be. Okay, so you don't have to come in for hard copy.
Here's, he's pointing out to you again.
Click on here.
Yep, I've been in there, yeah.
Google Drive and it'll take you right to.
Good, it's just, I wasn't sure if thousands and thousands of pages would be able to be included, so.
The previous years are all listed here and the nearest left is in the subject folder.
And I live right now, right next to the stream that will be the outflow of the wastewater treatment plant and it flows into some very important estuary, water table resources. And so I'm curious if the natural resource inventory that was done by the town informs your decision at all and how would you use that as part of this planning approval process?
So I, the new, the recently released NRI?
Yeah. Also, I was hoping to come and hear about the engineering of the wastewater treatment plant tonight and I'm wondering if the, a failsafe, you know, what happens if it really goes wrong and would there ever be a reason for, for raw sewage to, to find its way into that stream? And so I'm hoping that that'll be addressed.
Okay, I, I, I'm, this is a superficial response, but I'm assuming those are precisely the kinds of things that we will be asking our engineering consultant to assure you of.
Okay.
His review is of course separate from what we're receiving from Mark, which is why we rely on outside consultants.
Great, and so that is another question, you have the logistics of that engineering review.
I can't speak since I believe Christian has only received this today.
Good.
And Mark will be delivering hard copies tomorrow, which is what I thought I heard him say. I would, I would expect that there's at least several weeks of review on Christian's part because he's not, we're not his only client and I, like you, we want him to be as thorough and complete in his review as possible. My expectation is when we get, when we get reports back from him and we have, I would anticipate inviting him to be present at a public hearing so that he, he will both write to us and give his comments in writing, but I will be asking him to be present.
Okay.
As our consultant to answer directly from the public questions that might be posted based on his review.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Great, so it will be transparent and we'll be able to see the results of his review.
We want it to be transparent and, and we want Christian to be able to take his time because we want all the assurances that you want.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now, you just, just to be, to be, just to confirm, so in the same way that the developers need to present in advance of a, a public hearing session, would CPL also present two weeks before or through whatever it is and then we would know and be able to access that before the public hearing?
They will submit their, their, their review to us in writing and we will get it up as soon as we receive it. How that falls in terms of the sequencing of meetings, I, you know, I can't.
Okay.
I mean, certainly that would be our goal, to work toward that so that everybody, but you know, like sometimes things come in from the day before or whatever and Mark, you weren't, Mark's waving at me, so.
He did, submitted the day out.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, well, but.
No, no, I under, I do understand that, but it's, so I think, I think I get it. I mean, it's not like.
Christian's document will become a, a part of the public record.
He's not under the same pressure as the developers are in terms of deadlines. Got it, thank you.
It's the same situation I am, I'm a public consultant, he's an engineering consultant.
And much as we'd like to put him on a deadline, and I'd like to say, Christian, we need it, you know, next week, we have to be respectful of his time.
I understand, thank you.
But we will make it available as soon as it's in and we will, we will continue the public hearing until the questions have been answered.
Thank you.
Just a quick suggestion, would solve a lot of everybody's concerns, if they would upgrade that treat, that water treatment and just use their own water, just run it right back up into their own structures, use it for whatever, treat it to the point where they can use it again and don't put anything into our stream.
Okay.
Just, you know.
I, I, I'm assuming that that's been part of their, their thought process, but we'll, we'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to that conversation.
Hi.
Hi.
I hate doing this.
Do you?
I do.
But we're so friendly.
I know, and we're all friends now, we've been doing this for a long time.
I know, I feel like I've known you forever.
I'm Robert Stricksey, my husband and I live at One Troy Drive, which is right here. So we're on the other side of the development. We share all of our neighbors' concerns about the traffic, impact, wastewater, water sources for wells, but I have my own particular ones and it's, the board has changed composition over the years and I don't want these to be forgotten as you're evaluating thousands and thousands of pages. Right now, there's nothing here, just a couple of buildings. It's a spectacular habitat back in there. There's a remarkable diversity of wildlife, nesting owls, you know, regular migratory deer paths, turkeys, hawks, they're all residents and they've been there for years, just like we have and we know a lot of them. So of course concerned about the impact, in particular, there are my two items. One is the clear cutting to create a view shed from the manor house and I really want to encourage the board to not permit that. Any additional destruction of this habitat, that isn't required for the construction. To me, just seems foolish and destructive to the natural balance that's living there. So Mark, is that still in, is the clear cutting proposal still in the plans? Because at one point, Charles Blackwell had represented there would be no clear cutting, but then it was submitted.
So it was, so it's Kathleen Baquil is the landscape architect, but it was actually, there was, and it wasn't clear cutting, it was only topping the trees for views, but and that can, you know, that's a point of discussion, but it was actually suggested by a consultant to do that. It was a consultant of the towns who made that suggestion, so that's cer, that's certainly up for discussion.
So that's something I'm opposed to. The other thing is ensuring about night sky compliance and all of the exterior lighting and has that been completed and submitted?
That, that actually was submitted two weeks ago, so there was a, there's a landscape plan along with a lighting plan that's been submitted.
The last thing is, someone else has spoken about the gerrymandering of this plot and I think it is vital and Kara mentioned it as well, that the historic reuse of the existing structures is completed according to plan and is not somehow ignored or put aside and then the parcel that they exist on is handed over to another developer, but, and we're back to ground zero, fighting the kind of catering hall, private club thing we started with many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lyda Trager Landy, I live at 371 Primrose Hill Road, which is actually on the corner of Accro Hook and Primrose Hill. I've lived there for 68 years and I think I'm, I have the same concerns that all the rest of the people have about traffic and water and it's too large, too many units, 36. I don't see the need for that except for their monetary value. And I am concerned about the traffic because I don't know how all the builders and how all the construction is going to be done unless they come 9G and come right past my house or they come Route 9 and then they go past the neighbor's house and make the turn on the Accro Hook extension. You're talking about a road that barely fits two cars past one another at some instances. My husband drives a school bus, he has to go over as far as he can when the car comes at him. It just isn't the right area for the development that they're asking for and I just wanted to go on record to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cornelia Gallo, 340 Accro Hook Road. The construction traffic as well as the traffic is an issue. There are some projects going on on Vli Road and on Accro Hook Road and when these dump trucks that are, you know, three axles are going up and down, it is an issue. It's noise, it's the width of the road, you have pedestrians, you have dogs. I'd like to say we have more horses than we do, but we do have horses. The line of sight is atrocious and there's no shoulder. So as I'm there with two dogs, one of which does not like to get off the road, it can get a little challenging when I hear them coming and I'm still off the road. So the ongoing traffic after it's built and then we have had discussions about will the construction be required to use Primrose or are they going to be able to use Vli and Burger? So I don't know if that can be limited because you've got the one lane bridge basically by the Kerthoys, Von Huesens, which if you have that much traffic, I mean, there's things like that that need to be taken into consideration. So thank you.
Good evening, Ruben Lee Popper, 45, Aggerdy Hill Road. My across the street neighbor is not butter to the property, she couldn't be here. One, I walk down Accro Hook Road a lot in the mornings and I notice that by the entry there's a very large depressed area and what I'm wondering is if that can't be used for retention area for the wastewater that comes out of the treatment plant? Perhaps it could be, even be made into a water feature. It's a very large area, I was wondering if that could be entertained.
It actually is being entertained as a water feature for storm water.
Could it also be for the?
No.
Why is that?
Um, because in order to meet the standards that the New York State DEC and the Dutch County Health Department have for treating the wastewater, a certain process needs to take place and that needs to occur in the wastewater treatment plant and be discharged to, for, for positive outflow.
So it could be discharged into a stream but not into a retention space?
It needs positive outflow.
What does that mean?
A stream, you know, it needs an outlet, it needs an outlet, not a depression.
Well, I'm wondering if it can't be studied and perhaps it can be, you know, the water could discharge into the soils that way because it's a large area.
So once again, it's being used for storm water management, it's in order to.
Well, maybe the storm water could go into the stream and the wastewater could go into there.
So actually the, you know, I can, you know, I don't want to take up the board's time, but we'll, we can certainly respond to that and provide a summary.
That'd be good.
You know, with our storm water management report and we'll, we'll provide you a written summary and an answer to your question.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any board members? Any last minute questions? Okay.
I just, how many copies?
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hands if they're looking. Why don't you bring a couple extra copies?
Okay.
And, and if need be.
Well, there's nowhere to store them. We're going to get through.
I think we need to figure that out, I, I think this is.
So if, I mean, that's what I was saying, if anybody wants a copy then.
Well, I put, you know, Sean is saying.
Was he saying a lot of copies?
No, no, I was saying just one copy.
Oh, just, oh, I thought you were raising.
It did look a little like a.
It looked like me, I thought you were saying me, me, me.
Phil finally cabinet, no thank you.
Why don't you provide, go to him with two copies? And any board members, if you're desirous of looking at it, you can take it home and bring it back and we can circulate it over time. you can take it home and bring it back and we can circulate it over time and we'll just have that available. And that just leaves us to, when are we continuing to?
I'd like to continue to the December meeting. Hopeful that, you know, Christian a lot of that at the time, the review, but certainly...
Well, we can continue it to the December, what is it, the fifth meeting. I'm not going to speak for Christian.
Understood.
I'm just, I'm happy to do that, but I make no guarantees that we'll be in a position to receive comments back from him, certainly not to schedule him as part of that meeting.
Understood.
I just want the public to understand that as well, so... Could I have a motion to continue?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you.
I could entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, everybody's got to make that motion. Second, please, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone. Thank you for finding us and making the extra effort.